All right, let's call the regular city council meeting to order for the city of Galena, Illinois. Monday, April twenty second, twenty twenty four. Take roll.
I'm saying here, Johnson, here, keeper.
No.
Tagmeyer?
Here.
Westmeyer?
Here.
Weenan?
Here.
Yes, we have a call.
Simon.
That's the next. I need a motion to allow all persons to attend this meeting electronically, being still in the hospital rehabilitating from their surgery. So I need a motion to allow him to partake in this meeting.
So moved.
Move by Katie Weenan, second.
Okay.
All right, second. Take roll on that. Very good.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes. Also, jury had told us last week they moved him to Galena. And we called down, talked to City for last week to see if they could get here with the full electronic leak because there are certain checkpoints you have to do before we allow him. And with his disability and it's in hospital, so. Okay, now saying that, George, do you want to call jury keeper's name? Jerry, you wanna, you are present, right?
Yes.
All right. I don't sound like Mary Beth, but, okay. Next will be the item number twenty four C dash zero one four two, pledge of allegiance. Okay, now let's move ahead to item number twenty four C dash zero one four three. It's reports of standing committees. We have no reports tonight. Let's move ahead to item number twenty four C dash zero one four four, citizens' comments. Not to exceed fifteen minutes as an agenda item and not more than three minutes per speaker. If you wish to address the table, the council step up to the microphone, state your name and your address.
Hello, I'm Shirley Rosenbaum, Bio Three South Street. I'd like to use some of my three minutes to apologize for our pickleball group exceeding the allotted time for the public comments two weeks ago. None of us have ever had the need to come before council, and we are all learning a lot about the process, and we respect why you have the time limits in place. It was not our intention to create an issue while we were here. We also meant no disrespect when we laughed after public comments. We weren't on the agenda, so we wanted to let you go on conducting your business without us in your way. The old swimming pool location at Rec Park is a perfect spot for the eight courts we are proposing and has adequate parking already there. If you've ever played pickleball, played it while you're traveling, went to a surrounding town to try out their courts, or were at a tri-state area tournament, you would find that the town size of Galena, even with tourists using them, does not need more than eight courts. So I want you to rest assured that our group would never ask the city to allow us to build more courts than we already did. Our group or other nonprofits would be running tournaments there as fundraisers. If you've ever been to a sport in Galena and all the surrounding small towns in the tri-state area, you'll find that most parks do not have adequate parking for those fundraising tournaments. And you go there knowing you will have trouble finding parking because every kid's parents, sibling, and grandparent come to watch and spend the day there having fun. There will probably be only a couple tournaments held each summer, so no need for extra parking for six days out of the entire year. If you never played or had a child play or came to watch a grandchild play a sport at Rec Park, then you're missing out on a lot of fun. Let me tell you about the glory days at Rec Park, when the noise coming to the park wasn't considered noise. It was called families having fun. One night I would be playing women's sand volleyball league located directly behind the outfield fence. My husband was coaching my sons for little league baseball, and one of their teammates would hit a home run, and you'd hear someone yell, take cover. And all of us ladies would be putting our hands over our heads so we wouldn't be beamed in the head by a baseball. The next night I'd be back coaching my daughter's softball team. Then we'd be back again for baseball and softball practice if we could even get the fields. Then the weekends I'd be sitting on the bleachers watching my husband playing fast pitch. I also played in the women's softball league. This was before I even lived in Galena. We are the ones that fundraised to build the existing concession stand. And Sunday nights were for Kings and Queensville pitch. Just ask Jason Bingham, a neighbor that's lived directly across the street for many, many years. He can tell you how much he misses the ping of the baseball bat, the kids running around having fun, and hearing all the fun recreation noise that came out of the recreation park in its glory days. We need to bring that back. Pickleball will bring that back with families coming to Rec Park where the sound of the fun and noise will be heard once again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Shirley. Is there anybody else wishing to address the council at this time on any other matter of something?
Thank you. My name is Paul Connor. I live at two oh one, excuse me, two eleven Park Avenue. I feel like I live at two oh one Connor Street sometimes. I'd like to just encourage the council to strongly review the proposal for the demolition of the old lumberyard and the construction of a brand new parking facility next to my existing business, Easy Sell USA. I've been a part of this community since nineteen seventy seven. I've sat where you sat on committees on the council, and I always remember one of the issues that was always talked about was parking. And in this particular case, you have a private individual willing to use his own funds to create a, what I think is an attractive parking solution for the north end. It would, I think, balance out the parking solutions for both the city of Galena in all areas. You have the south, you have the middle, and this would take care of the north end. So I would strongly encourage that, the loss of that building. And trust me, I have been in that building, and that building is in sad shape. And I've always said since I used a little bit of space in there, the highest and best use for this space would be for parking. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank Paul.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Pat Reedy. I'm with Origin Design. And I'm here to speak on the same property located, or property located at two thirty-three North Commerce Street. We assisted with the creation of the application for the demolition of the structure. We've put together multiple renderings to kind of show what it could look like. And we just respectfully request that you allow the demolition per the plans that we've provided to you, which will preserve the original historic elements that are actually part of the original building that was there. Anything other than those limestone elements has been added over time and kind of in a mismatched fashion to create the structure that's there today. And we just respectfully request that you allow the demolition of the structure. Thank you.
I think that.
And I'm here if you have any questions during our deliberation.
Hi, I'm John Kazaya, back on one fifteen Perry Street, and I'm here to speak about that same property and the demolition of it. So Farb McCann has been doing business with Dino and his family for years now. Being able to have that parking lot or having more parking spaces available next to us is going to increase traffic to our store or drive business, which is going to help the economic growth here in town. So I strongly support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to address the council on any other subjects tonight? Okay, let's move ahead then to public hearing. We have none tonight. Next up is electric commission. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the city council and convene as a electric commission.
So moved.
All persons, Katie Weenan, moving.
Second.
Person, city tagmeyer. Take roll call on that. Very good.
Keeper?
Cherry?
Did you hear me? Okay?
Yeah, now I can.
Okay. Yes, I voted yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Renner?
Yes, motion carries. All right, we're in the electric commission. Let's go right into item number twenty four C dash zero one four five. It's discussion of possible action on the renewal of liquor license for the period May first, twenty twenty four through April thirtieth of twenty twenty five. Do I have some type of motion on that? All persons, Katie Weenan.
I make a motion to approve the liquor license as presented, renewal of liquor license for the period May first, twenty twenty four through April thirtieth, twenty twenty five, item number twenty four C zero one four five. Second.
All right, it's been moved second on item number twenty four C dash zero one four five. This is left over from last meeting that you got all the paperwork, you know, so any other questions on this? Take roll call, Mary Beth.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes, motion carries. All right, this time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn as electric commission and reconvene as the city council.
So moved.
All persons, city tagmeyer, by a second thought.
Second.
Second, all persons, town, chief, take roll, Mary Beth.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper? Keeper?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, we're back in the regular session as council. Let's move ahead then to consent agenda, CA twenty four dash eight. Some type of motion on this?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, CA twenty four dash eight.
Second.
They moved second on consent agenda, CA twenty four dash eight. You had a second, making a discussion on this, on any other numbers?
Thank goodness for the approval of nepotism so we can have lifeguards.
Very good point. Very good point.
When it makes sense.
Yeah.
We would have no pool employees. I was looking at that list.
Yeah. Thank goodness.
Thank goodness.
Yes. All right, take that roll call on that consent agenda.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes, motion carries. All right, let's move ahead to unfinished business. We have none. Move into new business. Move right into item number twenty four C dash zero one five three. It's discussion of possible action on appeal by Dino, the owner of two thirty-three North Commerce Street, formerly Galena Lumber, of a historical preservation commission ruling on the demolition of structures on the property. Some type of motion gets this started.
Make a motion to, it would be overturn the historic preservation commission ruling on the demolition of structures on the property at two thirty-three North Commerce Street, formerly Galena Lumber, item twenty four C zero one five three.
Okay, do I have a second on that one?
Second.
All right, the move second on item number twenty four C dash zero one five three, discussion on this. Katie, you want to start?
Yeah. I do think that the structure itself has some historic value. I do think that them keeping the limestone walls is kind of a blank slate. I know there's a lot of pages in there of stuff that they have tried to do or wanted to do. That's with the electrical contraption, I guess you could call it, in the middle. I think that prohibits a lot of development in that area. I think this is a blank slate to kind of start over, and if it's parking for right now, I don't want to make it all about parking. Yes, parking is a need, but there's other, other things that are just as important to Galena that maybe down the road would happen. But I think giving them the opportunity to, to start a blank slate with the limestone staying there is a benefit.
All persons, jury, anything?
I just take so much money to repair that building. It's pretty much in shambles, and they're trying to keep, keep what's from nineteen forty-six. And I think the joint looks nice, and the additional parking would be helpful to Galena.
Well, I have very mixed feelings about this. I've bounced back and forth. And one of the things that concerns me is that the owners have owned this property for quite some time and apparently have been on our substandard list and have, it's my understanding that they have not improved the property in any significant way since they've owned it. And that would lead me to believe, and I think it was mentioned in, at the historic preservation commission meeting, that they, their intention was to just let it kind of, I don't want to use the word fall down, deteriorate. And that concerns me somewhat because I think that's not a good approach for people buying historic property in our community. And I also think that the letter we received, and I'm sorry I don't have it in front of me, from somebody can help me out here. Yes, from the landmark, made a really good suggestion in saying that if the roof were repaired in there, it could still be used for parking until such time as the owners came up with another plan to present. So I'm kind of thinking that I'm leaning towards upholding the the vote by historic preservation, particularly because it was unanimous. And they're the people that have stepped up to the plate to try and deal with these issues.
All persons, take one.
Thank you. I think that the decision here is not what that space could possibly be used for, but the decision is whether it, it meets the, the HPC, the historic qualities of a building in Galena as we've defined by the city, by our ordinances and our rules. And we've entrusted those decisions to be made by the HPC. They have a unanimous vote to deny the demolition of the building. And I respect that decision, and in looking as to the reasons as to why, I would, I would go with that. And they did a detailed review of the application. They weighed in on the criteria. They followed a process. If any of those things, that the ordinances or our rules need to be changed in the future because of how we need to move forward as a city, we need to change those first, in my opinion, before we have, the decision comes to the council and we're just basing it on, you know, who has a nicer plan or who has more money or who has what, whatever. And we should really, I believe, we should be placing, we should be following our own rules that we have already deemed are important for what constitutes a historic, a historic building. So.
I don't think we should start the precedent of one council overturning another council. That council made their decision. I think we should stand behind their decision. They're the experts. You appoint those people on that council because they know what they're doing. I want to stand behind what they say.
All persons, jury keeper, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, I can. What are your thoughts on this?
All right, yeah, these buildings have been in disrepair for years, and I think the plan, the plan, several of them that they have would enhance the beauty of Galena. I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna use the old limestone. And if you look on pages forty-four and forty-five, I think that's a beautiful parking lot. And I think I'm in favor of tearing the buildings down and, and the only thing that I would recommend would be that they bring back what they're actually going to do with it. One, one drawing, and then we could go from there. And I also think that when we okay it, that we should put them on a timeline, that they get this done in whatever, two years, three years, and make them do it, you know? So that's, that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you, jury. I'm going to weigh in here a little bit on these buildings. You go back to the forty-seven picture that the poor billionaire struck back there. It's like the bottom thing. Go ahead and stand on this line wall. Our ordinances deal with three nineteen thirty, three nineteen thirty. Okay. This is in forty-six. Nothing left standing was limestone on this long building. I don't have a problem, and over the years, as people own that lumberyard, they cobbled it, made room, whatever it is I do, done what they have to, what materials they have left over to use. I, I think that we can maybe, I've just thrown this out, this is what I'm thinking, is that I don't have a problem with them taking, if you're looking at the lumberyard, where the new, that office you agreed on in the sixties with the windows, the glass windows, take everything down going north except the lime walls towards, towards the box office shop. The long building next to it going south from Commerce to Water Street, I feel that they should save that. Fix that up and recreate it into what they can put again. And then the other white lean to against far south of that building, they already had permission to take that down because that was an eight-year, right, add-on. That's my thing. Okay, Cindy, what we got that you wanted to say? Or Cindy, tagmeyer?
So first, just before I, before I forget, so I want to clarify what you just said. So you're, you're suggesting like a modification somewhere between the decision and the appeal?
Yeah.
Is what you're, what?
I'd like to, I'd like to have him say that one building, the long one that runs from Commerce to Water Street, because, you know, that was in the pictures, but the limestone still standing. And I'd like to keep that back there, fixed up and used for some purpose for downtown. Then the rest of the building, that was all came out in the fourteen to fifties and stuff, and I have no problem with that. If they keep the limestone out of those more sides.
I guess I get the other thing I was going to say is I get, I get confused as to where we're making our decision. It's like we're making our decision. There was eighty pages of a, of a plan, and that looked really nice, all the different ideas. There was everything from apartments to restaurants to park to parking lot to, you know, there was all sorts of things. Now, that wasn't just one idea. But what we're actually deciding tonight is not what's done with that land or that property. We are here to decide if we're going to agree to an appeal of, to allow them to demolish the building. So I feel like things get, they get jumbled together.
Okay, okay, just trying to keep this straight. When it comes to the council, we can affirm the HPC. We can deny what they ruled on. We can modify it. We can make changes. We can send it back. So we, as a council, have more legitimate powers than appointed historical.
Right, right, right.
Now, not just saying that because, you know, I'm talking about saving this building and the rest to go except for the limestone on the north, far north. All persons, panel, did you ever handle?
Yes, I did. My question is this. How do we? There are a couple things here in terms of requesting a modification. Do we, do we send this back and ask the HPC to request that Origin provide an alternate plan that would save more of that building? I'm not sure how.
Could do that if you want to send it back, or we could amend a motion to state that demolition would be allowed to the northern part of it, but the south, the long big buildings, it have to stay. And that would be the rule.
Okay. I, I think.
Go ahead.
I think I'd like to see that done because it seems like a compromise.
Well, yeah, I think it's compromise. I really do. The, the, the building, you know, ten year, seventy-five year, you know, I mean, I've seen this happening, you know. Too bad naturally burned down way back when, you know, but, you know, at least we're kind of keeping some historical, or historic, let's build after forty-six, you know, the limestone came before that. But I mean, and you use that building for some useful purpose, whatever that may be, but also that that key, the owners have to maintain that building and get it up and stuff.
Yeah.
That's why, but anyway, nobody wants to make amendment to that, which is, we can take.
I'll make a motion to amend it to see what they can come up with.
Second.
Okay, all right. We got a motion that they should come up with some plan for that long building to make them, you know. Take roll on that amendment now.
Johnson? This is just for the amendment, or are we talking about this full package here? We're allowing to do some things and not other things. What do we vote? What's this vote right now?
This vote is to have them, to allow them to do what they want to to the north end, but we want to keep the big main building that was there.
That's, I think we need to reword the motion.
Yeah, very, very confused.
I can recall my motion.
Okay, you recall.
I'll recall my motion.
Second, you okay with that? Would you want to make a new motion?
Yeah. I make a motion to send this project back to the HPC with the consideration to keep the middle building and approve demolition of everything to the left.
The left and then that lean two on the south, that old, that when it came was put up, I think, in eighty or something like that.
Yeah, that's already been approved.
That's already been approved and turned down.
To include the lean two.
What, what do you mean, to include the lean two? Are you saying keep better?
Well.
Get rid of.
Yeah, so keep the main long structure and then demo everything to the left, including the lean two. That's already been approved to demo.
Okay.
Second, second, all right.
And one other question. Do we need to specify rather than saying left? Should we say?
Go north from the window, from the window part of the center, go on north. That could come down except for the limestone. And to the right, going south, Commerce Street, there's a big building I want to save.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that we're perfectly clear what we're asking for.
That's very, that's very good, both, yes.
Can we just send it back and then have this discussion again so that the people who know what they're, what they're doing as far as describing it in architectural terms so that we're not saying left or right? And, and I'm trying, I'm sitting here looking at a picture, trying to make sure I understand what we're voting on. So could we make a motion so that we're sending it back? This is our recommendation, like you said.
That's what my motion was.
But it's not that, it's not that we're voting that that's the decision. It's the, it's the recommendation for them to review it with these things in mind.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I think we need to provide them some guidance.
Right, right, okay, good.
And if you went less into the meeting, then I think south and some of the, yeah, they have a tough time.
Yeah.
They had a tough time, you say.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, it's a very difficult situation. You know, and I know what you understand. Now, if all the buildings were eighteen sixty-five, be no problem. They'd be staying.
Right.
You know? So, okay.
Read back my motion. Your motion wants to send it back to the HPC with the consideration to keep the middle building and approve demolition of everything to the left, including the.
You want to put?
Modify left to north, please.
North.
Modify left to north, okay.
You're good with that, Cherry?
Second?
Yes, second. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else at this time? Jury keeper, you have anything? Jerry Kiefer, you have anything?
No, I'm good, Terry.
All right.
Everything was said already, so.
Okay, okay, all right, let's take a roll call, Mary Beth.
Kiefer? Kiefer?
Yes.
Tegmeyer?
She said Kiefer.
Yes.
West Meyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. All right, thank you all. Let's move ahead then by number twenty-four C day zero one five four. Discussion of possible action on a contract for exterior masonry repair at the Turner Hall. And that motion on this.
Make a motion to approve a contract for exterior masonry repairs at Turner Hall. For by State Masonry out of Rock Island for the amount of forty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, item number twenty-four C zero one five four.
I'll second it, Terry.
All right.
West Meyer.
All right, same by Jerry Kiefer. Well, it's discussion, it's probably something that's still to get done, it's gonna be the ball to the wall. Bring down, shouldn't, okay, all right, then, anybody else have anything on the Turner Hall? All right, take roll call on that.
Tegmeyer?
Yes.
West Meyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, then let's move ahead, item number twenty-four C day zero one five five. Discussion of possible action on selecting a consultant for the comprehensive planning process. Do you have some type of motion, all person, Cindy?
I make a motion to approve the selection of Housiel Levine as a consultant for the comprehensive plan process, not to exceed the amount of eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars, with a start date no later than August first, twenty twenty-four. It's item, sorry, item number twenty-four C dash zero one five five.
Okay, well.
Now, my second.
You got a second on it, here, all right, discussion on that. I think that would be time after, you know, hearing itself, and I'm sorry, I don't want them to go in and our committee to go in, but anyway. I think that would be appropriate. Dale, you have anything?
Yeah, fine, by me.
Okay, okay. All right, take roll call on that, Dale.
West Meyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Tegmeyer?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead then, item number twenty-four C day zero one five six, it's water and sewer operations, and maintenance monthly report from US Water, tonight, we have Andrew here, yes, you do.
Good evenings. Thanks for the opportunity to be here, Ms. Shuler, this report overs US Water, Operation Maintenance for the City of Galena, Water and Sewer for the months of February, March. All right, so the wastewater treatment plant treated fourteen point seven million gallons for February. And also sixteen point four million gallons for March. In February, we painted hydrants and repainted the front sign of the wastewater treatment plant. And we also replaced. Light bulbs, LED light bulbs at the wastewater treatment plant facility with refurbished light bulbs from the downtown, replacement of the light bulbs. Reuse those. We pulled up one pump from the Riverside station. That's being rebuilt by energetics right now. We pulled and replaced one of the pumps for the biosolids basement well, well, sub pump, replace that. And. In the month of March, we cleaned out the north dish and rebuilt the number two non-podable pump that had a broken mechanical seal that was leaking. So we did that house. And the wastewater plant is operating properly. Drinking water, total well production for February was thirteen point two million gallons with fifty-five percent built. And March, we produced thirteen point eight million gallons and fifty-three percent is built. The expenses for February, March look good, any problems? And we're gonna continue looking for, doing a lease survey, some of the problem areas throughout town. Help Five Star with their lead copper. Placement, once they come back from town, then help Fishers on Highway Twenty project. This has been very important for February, March, be happy answering questions and for clarification.
The leaders haven't come in yet, exactly.
Uh, no, I believe there's twenty years that are ordered on our way.
Okay, yeah, just keep going with the weeks.
Any questions?
Any questions for Andrew, he has water? All right. He's moving ahead with that. All right, thanks, Andy. Okay, then let's move ahead, item number twenty-four C day zero one five seven, it's the warrants, do I have a motion for the warrants? All person, Tamper.
I will be approved via warrants, item number two four C dash zero one five seven.
Okay, second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved second on the warrants, so is there any questions on any of them?
The warrant that's for the historical museum. The amount on the warrants was seventeen thousand five hundred, it should have been five thousand.
She saw that.
Oh, I'm here?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, everybody understand the correction?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Anything else, audience, warrant? Okay, take roll call on the warrants, you know, Beth.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Tegmeyer?
Yes.
West Meyer?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead, item number twenty-four C day zero one five eight, all persons comments, all person, jury, Kiefer.
Hey, I'll be at the next meeting if I have to crawl in, so.
That sounds, that sounds interesting.
We'll send you a shadow.
Yeah. If not, we'll all come out to get you, all person, you know, tell you.
I just wanted to say, I'm glad Jerry's back, even, even virtually, so that, that, that is nice, and. I just wanted to nod to. Shirley, Rosenthal, and the rest of the, the rest of the pickleball fans at the beginning. That I think everyone, if they're not a fan of pickleball, they're at least interested now in pickleball, after all the, all the excitement, and. And the. The next step would be to figure out how, what the actual ask is. I think the ask needs to be clear. And it needs to be monetary, and it needs to be figured out, and it needs to be decided on which budget, which year, and if it's, if it's a possibility. I don't think it's a question of whether, whether. The city is for or against people enjoying outdoor sports. So, so I would like to just see it take whatever the next natural step it needs to take, so we can figure out what, what we can do to help.
Sounds good, all right, yeah, all person, Cindy Johnson.
I don't even have anything.
All right, all person, Katie.
I mean, I was gonna talk about pickleball, but I think you said it perfectly, so nothing else, thank you.
All person, Jerry West.
Nothing tonight.
All right, all person, Pam Bernstein.
Nothing, thank you.
All right, thank you all. Let's move ahead, item number twenty-four C day zero one five nine, city administrator's report, Mark.
Just two items, first, the, first of all, thanks to the council for the approval of the budget, I thought it was a great process. Budget is now on our website, we're in the public viewing, so that's effective May first. And thank you to Barb and the Chamber of Commerce Board for hosting the mayor and me last Thursday. She had a great attendance there, I think there were about fifty people for breakfast with the mayor. He's real good at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving ahead, item number twenty-four C day zero one six two, mayor's report, I think Mark just reported on the mayor, sorry. Always great to get out, you know, to people of downtown business, or anybody who wants, it was a great, great, great record, great meeting. All right, let's move ahead then, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the items that are listed.
Make a motion to go into executive session for items including section two C two, collective negotiating matters and deliberations concerning salary schedules, section two C twenty-one, review of executive session minutes, item number twenty-four C zero one six one.
Second.
All right, so move second going to executive session for the items, let's take roll call on that, Mary Beth.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Tegmeyer?
Yes.
West Meyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. All right, thank you all.